Good morning, Douglas County. The August 5th, 2024 work session of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will come to order. County Clerk, would you please take the role for the record?
Yes, sir. Commissioner District 1 Ricky Dobbs, he indicated he would be just a little late this morning. Commissioner District 2 Whitney Kenner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner District 3 Martin Raxton.
Present.
Vice Chair District 4 Mark Alcaraz.
Present.
Chairman Phil Miller.
I'm here, thank you. Commissioners, are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda? And I think Mr. James Worthington has an item, is that correct?
Can you come up, James?
I apologize, I'm a little new to changes like this, so I don't know the order. Do I go ahead and present this now, or just explain what it is?
If you just, if you just tell me what the item is, and then they'll vote to amend the agenda.
Okay, got it. Good morning, everyone. We had a request from the Water and Sewer Authority. There is a sewer line that kind of serves most of Douglasville downtown area that runs behind the courthouse and down over here by the senior center. That sewer line has been exposed, the banks have shifted over the last few storms or years, I'm not really sure how soon, but they want to redo that sewer line, get it out of the exposed area, but they need to move their easement over. So, we want to go ahead and see if we can get the board to approve that easement, even though they don't have an easement yet, but it'll be pending legal review and approval. And I apologize, this is new for me, too.
Okay. Well, we can put that on the agenda for tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes, we just need a motion to amend the agenda by adding that item.
I'd make a motion that we put this on the agenda for tomorrow.
So move.
A motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other corrections to the agenda? If not, it stands as approved. As a reminder, each commissioner will have three minutes to make remarks and two minutes for rebuttal. Clerk, did we have anyone sign up for public comment?
Yes, sir, we had one individual. Before I call you up, I will just remind you of the requirements. When you reach the podium, please restate your name and your address and your subject matter, and you will have three minutes to address the board. Once your three minutes are up, I will ask you to wrap up your comments. So, the citizen signing up is Nathan Britt, you can come up now.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, my name is Nathan Britt, address 8854 Campbellland Street, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. Coming to speak on items 7, 8, and 9. I just wanted, I'm coming on behalf of President of Local 2851 Douglas County Professional Firefighters. I just want to come and thank Chairman, thank the board. I would publicly like to thank all my members and the members of Douglas County Fire Department that have put in countless hours of research, testing, training, and utilizing this equipment that we're looking at purchasing here. This right here is going to be a great step forward in advancing our life-saving equipment. Also like to thank our command staff, our fire chief, and thank the citizens of Douglas County for voting this splosh in so that we can utilize these funds for these purchases and not have to put the burden on the taxpayers of Douglas County, Georgia. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Next on the agenda is the meeting minutes. Commissioners, please review the minutes before tomorrow's meeting. We will have a proclamation for tomorrow proclaiming August 11th, 2024 as Douglas County 811 Day. We will now begin with the agenda items. Clerk, please begin with the first agenda item.
Yes, sir. We'll begin with grants, number five. Authorization to accept grant funds in the amount of $5,850 with no match required from the Georgia EMS Association towards EMT tuition for 24 hour, for, I'm sorry, for 24 students, amend the budget, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, County Administration. Yes, the Fire Department has been granted these, this grant for our GIMSA for the EMT students tuition for about 24 students. This is going to be sorely needed for our, for our education for the EMS side of the Fire Department.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments?
Just one quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Chiefs, good morning.
Good morning.
For the 24 students, is this for the full application for the full amount, or is there any additional amount above and beyond what's being requested?
I'm going to ask my grant analyst to speak on that one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The amount GIMSA will allocate to us will cover the entire EMTB course.
Okay, for all 24 students?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, next clerk.
Thank you. We have business items, number six. Approval of a contract with first-arriving digital dashboard for one additional dashboard license in the amount of $146.06 to be funded by the Fire Department budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
Yes, so earlier this year, the board approved the first-arriving digital dashboards for all the stations, so we recognized that we needed an additional license for that, and so for that, this is the ask that we're, that we're requesting.
Okay, any questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Next.
Okay, number seven. Approval to purchase extrication equipment from NAFCO per the National Purchasing Partners Cooperative Agreement in the amount of $225,883 to be funded by the 2022 SPOST and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
So, this request is to move forward with the purchase of new extrication equipment for our Fire Department Rescue Squad truck, ladder trucks, and an engine, and this extrication equipment is going through NAFCO, which is a company that we have used, and it is on the MTP.gov, so we've done all our due diligence with that.
Okay, questions or comments? Next.
Okay, number eight is approval to purchase a 2026 Spartan Gladiator Chases Heavy Squad Truck from Emergency Vehicle, Inc., Houston-Gatlestone Area Council Cooperative Agreement in the amount of $1,492,470 to be funded by the 2022 SPOST and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen.
Once again, this is also another request to move forward with the purchase of a heavy rescue vehicle. This vehicle is used to transport personnel, tools, equipment for the use of extrication through vehicles, buildings, water rescue, rope rescue, trench rescue, et cetera. And there is like a 14-month lead time on the build of it.
So it'll be 14 months before we get it, is that what you're saying?
That is correct, sir.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we need to go ahead and order that. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, next.
Last one, Chief Allen. Approval to purchase Bullard brand thermal imaging cameras from Georgia Fire and Rescue Supply LLC in the amount of $119,086.16 to be funded by the 2022 SPOST and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review.
So, the request is to replace the aging and out-of-date thermal imagers that we currently have. Bullard is the standard that the National Fire Department is used across country, and it is one of the ones that we do have currently in our, in our, our use right now, and so this is the ask that we're, that we're requesting.
Okay, questions or comments?
I do have one.
Yes, Commissioner.
I just, it's more of a comment, but I just had the opportunity to go back and look through all of these over the last week, and I just want to say that we really do appreciate your new leadership and forward-thinking. Items like this are putting Douglas County on the way to being a top-notch Fire Department in the metro area. You know, we're not a small county anymore, really, and I, and I think we need to make sure that the citizens recognize what this is going to do in terms of enhancing and improving their safety, so I do appreciate you for, for making these purchases, it really is going to be beneficial.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Chairman.
Vice Chair.
This is just for my colleagues, because they weren't here when we did this, but we made the 2022 SPOST list, each department put on their, basically a wish list on the 2022 SPOST, and all three of these, 7, 8, and 9, were already forethought, thought of by our leadership, our fire chief, for his list for the upcoming SPOST, so I appreciate you as the same, I'll just piggyback off of Commissioner Kenner Jones', is I appreciate you looking forward as to what our county needs and go ahead and being proactive. I appreciate that from all of our directors, especially all of our public safety, well, not just them, but thankful for all of our public safety for getting me that list ahead of time, and I yield back, Chairman.
Thank you. What are we planning to do with the old ones? Are those still going to be used, or?
Well, some of them are so old right now that even when they break, we can't find parts for them.
Yeah.
So, as, as we phase the new ones in, we're still going to use them until we can't use them anymore.
Okay. I was just wondering if, you know, there's a lot of Fire Departments out there, smaller Fire Departments, that don't have any kind of equipment like that, and wondered if it was a possibility to maybe donate those to somebody that couldn't afford them.
And this adds to the ones that, to the vehicles that we don't have, have the cameras on.
Okay, all right, so we still need them, we just.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you, all right. Anyone else? Thank you, next.
Number 10. Approval of Douglas County E911 to enter into an agreement with Virtual Academy, a Division of Saveant Learning Systems Incorporated for virtual public safety answering point training, and at an annual cost of $2,700 to be funded through the 2024 E911 budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Katrina Harley.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, County Administration. Back in January 2024, the Governor signed into law the Official Code of Georgia, annotated 35823, that requires all of those operators who are certified through the Peace Officer Standards Training Council as communications officers to obtain 10 annual CEUs for their certification to remain intact. Virtual Academy is one of those companies that has been approved by Georgia Post to ensure that that happens. A lot of times, we can't send our staff to training, but this allows them to have that, that training virtually.
Okay, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, just from the date and timing standpoint, what would be that calendar, is that a calendar year, or what does that year look like as far as starting? Is that on the 13th of June, or, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the dates?
Yes, so the calendar year starts January, so many of our operators already do have some hours, so this will give us another component to make sure that they have all of their 10 CEUs that they're required to have.
Okay, and then the contract that we're assigning, or we're looking to execute now, when would that be effective, and when is that year up, as far as from a contractual standpoint?
One year.
Okay.
One year from the date of signature.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, dear.
I have the next one. Number 11. Approval for Douglas County E911 to enter into an agreement with Right Sight Health to connect non-emergent, non-emergent patients with a telehealth ER doctor and navigate them through appropriate patient care with no annual cost, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Director Harley.
Right, so in November of 2023, the Douglas County Fire EMS Department came before you for their agreement with Right Sight. This agreement just allows for 911 to also be in agreement with Right Sight in case there is a call that's needed to be made from our vantage point to Right Sight to connect patients with care within an ER doc for telehealth.
Okay, questions or comments?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, thank you, Director, for bringing us to us. I think this is definitely a great step in helping us to ensure that our residents gain the services quickly, and I think that telehealth is definitely a great mechanism to utilize. So, again, I just want to commend you and the team for pushing this forward, and I think this is definitely going to help us to serve even additional residents and supporting them, so I just wanted to make that comment. Now, you're the floor, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Number 12. Resolution approving the issuance of revenue bonds in regard to the TEPRA approval for Astoria at Crystal Lake requested by the Housing Authority of Douglas County and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Joe Fowler.
Morning, everyone, Joe Fowler, Post Office, Box 489. Housing Authority of Douglas County has entered into an agreement with Golden United Methodist Church and the Benoit Group from Atlanta for the construction of 165 senior housing apartment units on Chicago Avenue behind the church on J.D. Simpson Avenue. The 165 units will be available to seniors 62 and older whose income does not exceed 60% of the area median income. The project is being financed with 60, rather, $26 million in tax-exempt financing for the project, which is known as Astoria at Crystal Lake. The bond lawyer is here with us, Chaney Luckin, who's putting all the documents together. As you know, where tax-exempt bonds are being issued, there's a federal law, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, that requires there to be a hearing before a hearing officer to give the public the opportunity to weigh in on whether or not that's appropriate use. That hearing was conducted this morning, it was advertised in the Douglas County Sentinel, nobody attended. This actually is a rerun of what happened last year, on August the 4th of last year, you approved, the prior board approved at the TEPRA hearing for this project, but project costs, because of things that came out of the slowdown in the economy, also slowed that project. The TEPRA approval is good for a year, and it expires on August the 15th. This is expected to close by the end of the month, and so we're here before you again to ask you to approve the TEPRA financing. And if you have questions, the person who knows the answers, seated to my left. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Miller, you might qualify for a place over there.
I would, about 10 years, of course, you would too, also.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Thank you. Number 13. Approval of change order number one with Ward Humphrey in the amount of $286,890.90 for the construction of the coroner's facility to be funded by the 2022 SPOST with no additional impact to the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. James Worthington.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As mentioned, this would be approval of a change order number one for Ward Humphrey's, who's doing the general contracting for the coroner's facility. I want to be real clear, I'm not asking for additional funds out of the budget, this is already allotted in the SPOST, but we had some additional funds allotted for remaining constructions, fixtures, furnishings, equipment thing. I'm just requesting to shift some of that money over to the general contractor so he can do the installation and purchases some of these items. It will improve efficiency, the timing is critical at this point, and then also, if there's any problems at the end, that eliminates all the finger-pointing of this is somebody else's fault, so that's the idea behind all of this.
Okay, questions, comments?
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair.
So, I'm assuming we spoke with the coroner about this, and she's okay in regards to some of the fixtures and furnishings?
Yes, yes, sir. So, the deputy coroner's been in all of the meetings, coroner's been in a good bit of them, but the deputy coroner's been representing and conversing back and forth with the coroner, he's given approval to everything so far.
Okay, I yield back, Chairman.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number 14. Approval of a short-term rental monitoring contract with Deckard Technologies in the amount of $5,275 to be funded by the Planning and Zoning Department budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Allison Duncan.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This is a proposal to continue the work that we started maybe about two years ago with the short-term rental monitoring. Our previous vendor had become unresponsive at the time of our contract renewal, so we were seeking additional proposals from other vendors. We did receive three quotes, in addition to that, a firm that opted to not bid, and so the $5,275 was the lowest bid for changing vendors for this program. So if it is the will of the Board of Commissioners to continue the program to monitor the locations of short-term rentals, this amount is budgeted in the Planning and Zoning Department budget, and we are recommending this vendor for the contract, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions, comments? And you did say this is in the budget?
This is in our budget, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You have the next one, too, Allison. Appointment of Ann Smith and Terry Kilgore to the Cemetery Commission Board effective immediately.
All right, thank you. We do have three vacancies on our Cemetery Commission. These are two citizens who have submitted their application to be considered for the Cemetery Commission appointment. The Cemetery Commission did review these applications and did recommend that they be appointed to the Cemetery Commission, which, as you know, is an action that would need to be taken by the Board of Commissioners. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
So, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Allison, good morning.
Good morning.
Just out of curiosity, the two individuals that have submitted application, which county district are they representing, or would they be coming from?
I can look at their applications and let you know that, you're asking which commission district are they in?
Correct.
I will look at their applications, and I can give you that answer, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can certainly give you that answer.
Okay, because it is my understanding that these also are district appointments from the Board of Commissioners, is that correct?
I don't think, not the Cemetery Commission.
Not the Cemetery?
No, sir.
Okay.
Right, the only thing I would add to that is I think that it's a 10-member commission, and so generally speaking, if folks have expressed an interest in serving on the commission, we have brought those to you for consideration. Certainly, if you have individuals that you would like to appoint, we would take that into consideration. I think we'll still have at least one additional vacant position, but I can give you a breakdown, I can, I guess, email that to you, or email that to Lisa, of, you know, the current members and which district they physically reside in, I'd be happy to get that to you this afternoon.
All right, thank you. I yield the floor back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Number 16. Resolution authorizing the application to be submitted to Georgia Department of Community Health for the private home care license and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review.
Good morning.
Dr. Gilchrist, sorry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the board, and County Administration. Yes, I stand before you this morning, Senior Services, we provide homemaker services to medically frail seniors in the county. Currently, we are serving about 85 seniors in that particular service, and so recently, the Department of Community Health, they changed their requirements where we have to seek licensure to provide, to continue to provide those services. The only other option would be to no longer provide the service or to contract it out, so I stand before you this morning requesting to apply for licensure.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Have it done, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Number 17. Approval to amend the budget by transferring $725,000 from Fund Balance Capital Outlet to the Sheriff's Office for the purchase of a boiler for Douglas County Law Enforcement Center. We have Ken Connor here.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
So, I'm here with Captain Sword, he's over our maintenance division at the Sheriff's Office. We have, we've got three boilers, they're like hot water heaters, which you have in your house, but these are, these are, these are not residential, they're not commercial, they're industrial, so they're, they're huge. Matter of fact, the whole, they're going to have to cut a hole in the wall to get them out, because they built the building around them, I guess. So, these tanks were installed in 2011, when the Sheriff's Office was built, and they had a five-year, now that we know now, a five-year warranty on them. So, out of the three, one has already went out, and the other two are showing signs that they're, they're probably about to go out. And this provides all the hot water to the entire jail and the law enforcement center. So, and it's, they're saying 14 to 16 weeks for production once we give them the go-ahead. So, we're kind of in a crunch, and to get them ordered, Captain Sword has called around, and the company that makes these, or made the ones that we have, they don't, the tanks, how many gallon tanks are?
Thousand gallon tanks.
Thousand gallon, they don't even make the thousand gallon tanks anymore. We're going to have to go with the...
Well, they have a thousand gallon, but it's a 2 million BTU unit, and now the biggest they make is 1.6 BTU, and that is a big difference than like from your home water heater and stuff.
Okay, so, so they do, they do make that gallon size, but the BTUs is lower. I knew there was something that was different with it, but there's nobody else that makes one that size with that BTU.
That's correct.
This is the only company. So, with that, to replace the three boilers, it's a cost of $495,000. Once you get the boilers there, we have to have a plumbing company come in and plum them all, and that's another $201,114. And then we've got to pay a company to, this is an exterior wall, I'm assuming it's a load-bearing wall, that they're going to have to, a concrete company is going to have to come in and cut the, out the section at a price of $14,680, and then the remainder of the 725 is going to be used for local metal fabrication to, for the supports, for the beams and stuff that goes into these, where they're cutting this old bigger to stabilize the load-bearing wall. So, that's, that's kind of where we're at, and I've got Captain Sword here to can answer any technical questions. The tanks that are proposed are a 25-year tank warranty, it has a 15-year replacement and with an additional 10-year prorated at a reduced amount for a new one based on the year from six to, I mean, the remaining 10 years of the warranty. And like I said, the old ones were only five years, so we've, we've, we've extended. These boilers are about shot, so. If you have any technical questions, Captain Sword can answer them, or anything.
We have any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
How many plumbing proposals did you all receive? How many companies did you review?
We looked into every, the county's got a number of vendors that are there, and this is the only vendor that does this size plumbing. Everybody else is like two-inch and under, these are four to six-inch pipes, and that is only, it's the only one we could get to fill.
And for the exterior wall construction?
I only got one because I couldn't, I don't know of another company that comes in and does a diamond cut, and I apologize, I did look and research, but I couldn't find another company that would do such a cut there.
And the same for the metal fabrication?
Yes, ma'am. The metal fabrication is, we got BSA and Wayne's Industrial and stuff like that. We've looked into there, but Wayne was the cheapest on that one.
And are they going to replace all three at the same time?
That's what we're looking, and doing so, we're saving $127,000.
What's the savings based on? What's the savings based on?
If you just do one, it's calculated, if you buy that one, I think it was 80 or like $91,000 a piece, to where you add that time three, and you come down, they're cutting $60,000 off buying three. And if you do all three with the plumbing, it's the same thing, it's, you're saving $20,000 a unit, so you're saving $120,000 by doing all three instead of just one at a time.
And I was, I would presume if you don't replace all three at the same time, you're going to have to cut that wall out multiple times?
The metal fabrication is to build the wall up to where we can be removed and put, but the plumbing, though if you see the room, all the plumbing would have to be removed and reinstalled, and that's where your money comes back for your plumbing again.
I have no further questions, Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else?
I do.
Yes, sir, Mr. Krebs.
Thank you. Just a quick question in regards to why the maintenance is going on. What happens to the facility? How is water being provided? How is that being managed, and what's the contingency plan there?
Okay. Our intent, this is a lead building, so with the intent that we're...
Oh, sorry, sir.
Uh, this is my first. The, we're going to put ball valves, hopefully, in a short time of shut-off, and isolate each unit, because right now they're not isolated. And if we can isolate one, maybe we can run another one while one's being replaced to supply some hot water to that unit. Cold water will still be supplied because we're going to isolate the cold from the hot. But we're, we're in a mixed valve unit, so that means you have hot and cold touching one valve and then going on. So that cold water will be continued on, so they'll have some more use for toilets and, or facilities. But the hot water, we're hoping to isolate, so at least give some for cooking and cleaning.
Okay. And then what's the estimated time and length for the work to be completed, from start to finish?
The, like you said, three, four months just to get the units here. The cutting of the wall and doors will have to start, so we can get that fabricated on the point, and hopefully, a week, no more than two, for finalizing the gas, because we've got to have gas and water's got to be configured.
Okay. All right, thank you. No more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Sheriff?
Hey, how do you want?
Okay. We will move to our discussion items. Number 18, a request by the City of Douglasville for annexation of 21.24 acres on Malone Road for the construction of 181-unit townhome community. Allison Duncan.
All right, good morning. Thank you again. Just like to pull up a couple of slides here so you can be oriented to what we are looking at. All right, all right. So again, this is a proposed annexation we've received from the City of Douglasville. It is, the entire project is 21.24 acres. I want to take a minute to clarify, I'm going to jump down here to this slide. Only about 14 acres of the entire site are actually in unincorporated Douglas County, so you can see the parcels highlighted in blue there. Two parcels to the south along Malone Road are actually currently in the city limits of Douglasville, and then there's four parcels adjacent to that. That's the property that they are proposing in total to develop the 181 townhomes. This project site is in District One, and a couple of distinctions between some of the other annexations we brought you previously, specifically the most recent one on Malone Road where we did vote to raise an objection, that was in an area that we had identified as rural reserve, you know, for our comprehensive plan. This is in an area where the future land use does anticipate urban residential development. They are seeking a rezoning to a planned unit development, which is a compatible zoning district to what is in the area in the city of Douglasville. However, it is currently zoned residential-agricultural in the county, so the jump from a residential-agricultural zoning to what would be an eight-unit-per-acre planned unit development is a substantial increase in the overall density of the project. So we present this to you here today for discussion. If it is the will of the board to continue to raise objections to the City of Douglasville about these annexations, we can certainly work with the county attorney and craft a letter to that effect that we can have on the agenda for tomorrow. However, I would indicate that this is in a bit of a different area of the county than some of our previous annexations have been. It is an area where we contemplate a higher intensity of use, but nonetheless, we still have the same concerns about the impact to service delivery, particularly in regard to public safety response times. So I'm going to yield at this time and answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
A couple of things. One, 181 units, well, of course, we've already, you already brought up the fact of how we've, the moratorium, and how we anticipate the growth of Douglas County, seeing that hopefully we can be more on the same page with the city, because that is a major impact to the population of students, for the first concern is the students, for the schools of Douglas County, North Douglas, Burnett, all in this area, which is already at a capacity. This is concerning for 181 units in, within District One, the city limits of District One. I just wanted to put it on record that it is a concerning thing for me. This is also the place where I grew up, and to have this continue, 181 be overpopulated in District One, to me, in the city limits area, so I just wanted to go on the record and say how I feel about that. And hopefully, you know, my counterparts here will be on the same page, and we can continue going forward with looking out what's best for Douglas County and the infrastructure going forward. Chairman, I yield.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair.
Looking from here, of course, what subdivision is that? It looks like, is there a road going through to connect to that subdivision?
The subdivision to the north?
Yes.
I don't know that it will actually connect, I mean, I think it's possible that it could connect, this is just a concept plan, and so any decision about connecting to the existing road network would be made at the time that the property would be annexed into the city, and they rezone it. At that time, it would no longer be county's jurisdiction to look at the connection. If I jump back over here to this slide, you will see the area that it is proposing to connect into that subdivision would be in the city of Douglasville. So I don't know the name of the subdivision off the top of my head, it's one that's in the city, so I'm not as familiar with it, but I can certainly get that information for you. And again, ultimate connectivity into that subdivision, if it were annexed, would be up to the city to make that determination, because that would be their road, unless Director Rana contradicts me, I believe that that's a local street totally contained within the city limits, and so the city would be responsible for that road.
Okay. This, maybe, I don't know, maybe Director Rana or someone knows, is that Hunter's Ridge subdivision possibly?
It's either, it's either Hunter's Ridge or Augusta Woods, back there. I'm trying to look it up now, too.
The only reason I'm asking is, some of those residents, I know some of those that live in there, one of our school board members, DT Jackson, lives in Hunter's Ridge subdivision. He actually called me, asking if there's anything we could do, because it's being proposed to them that that is actually going to connect into their subdivision, and a lot of the residents are very upset about that. And he's also upset about that in regards to the impact it's going to have on the schools. So, I'm just going to concur with Commissioner Dobbs, this is his district, but I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I'm completely opposed to any more, and we've been really having some great discussions, I believe. Commissioner Kenner Jones spoke with Councilman Estes in regards to some of this, but I'm hoping that our council men and women on the Douglasville will start to look at this with us in regards to the impacts and help us slow this down, at least until the study can be provided to us. But just wanted to give my opinion on that, and I yield back, Chairman.
Thank you.
Has the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department weighed in on their ability to service this area? Should this be approved?
So the impact statements would not come through our office at this time, it's maybe something we can tweak in our annexation process, but because the request is to annex into the city and rezone into the city, any impact statements that they would provide would be provided to the city at the time that it's actually within the city.
And I presume any conversations then or discussions in terms of impact fees would also have to come from the city?
To my knowledge, the city doesn't have an impact fee ordinance enacted, so any additional, let's call it conditions of zoning, that would be imposed on the project at the time would have to be taken by the city. If the county is choosing to object, we can certainly raise that objection, and we can, county attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can kind of go to an arbitration panel that would be facilitated through the state to kind of work out the concerns between the city and the county, you know, but right now, if what I'm hearing is that your objection is based on impact to services and the significantly higher density than what we would contemplate under the base zoning, it seems like the most appropriate course of action would be that we would work with the county attorney to draft the letter, have this as a formal item for you to vote on at the meeting tomorrow, similar to what we did on Malone Road where you're saying that you would like to trigger that, that objection and mitigation through the, through the state statute. That's what I'm understanding.
And from a statutory perspective, it does fit, the annexation request does fit with our future use plan, or is it totally different?
So this annexation request in this location, this is an area where it's kind of a little cutout that's surrounded by city. So Highway 92, if you're looking at the map, Highway 92 is pretty, pretty close there to the west, Highway 92 going north, and I'm sorry, I could have had a detail, and I can provide that tomorrow to give you a better idea of the location. This is in an area where our future land use map does contemplate that the land use may transition to a little bit of a higher density, but nonetheless, the specific rezoning request is something that would be going from, you know, one-to-one to eight units per acre, right? So I think that there is a basis, unless county attorney offers to a different opinion, I think there is a basis to say that that jump in intensity is probably significant enough to warrant looking at the impact to service and to raise an objection by the Board of Commissioners.
And the county, despite the annexation, would still be responsible for the road maintenance in that area?
I would have to defer to Director Rana on that. My understanding that if you have a local road and it's, you know, totally within the city limits, that the city would take care of that road, but I don't know if he wants to come up and offer a different assessment. That's a general rule of thumb that I know, he may know more details if you would like to speak with him, so.
I'll just confirm what Allison said, it would be city's responsibility.
Thank you, Director Rana. Do they have the same requirements in terms of adding sidewalks that the county has?
I'm not too sure about that, but I can check on that and get back to you.
Thank you. I yield back, Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Connor, you?
Just real quick, as far as the impact goes, even though it's not in the county's jurisdiction for law enforcement, we have been supplementing the city's responses to domestics and that sort of thing. It also increases with add more houses, eventually you'll have evictions and that, we serve those papers, so it does impact the Sheriff's Office in a sense, as well as magistrate.
Is Chief Allen still here?
Chief, yeah. Police coming up, are these rentals or are these for sale, or do you know?
I don't believe that the application indicates one way or the other whether it's a rental or a fee simple for sale.
Okay.
What does this look like in terms of the Fire Department's impact to add this 181-unit development?
I mean, any addition is going to cause an impact to the Fire Department, however, the Fire Department is going to do what we do, we're going to respond, it's going to be business as usual. I mean, we're going through our, through our changes as it is today, but, you know, any, anything like this is going to impact us, but we will respond.
And in terms of your staffing, is that going to pit you all at an even greater deficit than you're already at, or?
Not necessarily, because we still have the safer going on, and we're still hiring as needed, as we can get certified personnel in, but our staffing is the same as every other fire department in the country.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Okay. All right. Is it my understanding that you would like to see this tomorrow for a vote to raise an objection? Is that...
I would, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next.
The last thing on our agenda is number 19, to discuss the TSPAS referendum. I will defer to legal.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and the county administration. You should have received notification from me, I guess that was last week, just a reminder that I do believe we have a quorum of you that will be available for the meeting on August 7th. Just this morning, the Sentinel was prepared to move forward, I also spoke with IT and Communications, who was also prepared to move forward right after the... Communications, who was also prepared to move forward right after the meeting on August seventh, which I believe is going to be at eight a.m. I just got an updated project list from the City of Villarica with their estimations on the amount of the projects, and so that amendment will happen to the draft that's been circulating of the intergovernmental agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments? We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner, do you have any other comments? Attorney Wiggins, do we need to go into executive session?
Yes.
I'm getting a phone call, hold on. We are adjourned to going into executive session, thank you.
Chairman, sorry.
Yes, sir.
We need a vote to go into executive session, well, also, we need to know what we're going to executive session for.
Madam Seckler was just about to say that, and so thank you, Commissioner Alcaraz, so the motion would be to go into executive session for the purposes of, and we'll state them all, as I told you guys at the last meeting, real estate, litigation, personnel, and cybersecurity.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for real estate, litigation, cybersecurity, and personnel matters.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of going into executive session, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, we'll see you later.